Okay, we're streaming.
We can't hear him.
Oh, he's.
Yes, don't unmute.
How about now?
How about now? Now it works.
Okay, sorry you guys, I had a. I had a, what's, I guess, getting close to being a senior moment on my, with my other computer, so. I'm good to go, and are we live, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Thanks a lot. All right, we'll go, hello, everybody, why don't we do this real quick? We'll call the meeting to order at twelve oh nine, I apologize for that. And prior to jumping into approving of our consent agenda, I'd like to just go ahead and do a roll call of who we have in the meeting.
Harry Andrews.
Chris Parks.
Jason VanderVeen.
Dave Hanson, Board Chair, and go ahead, Mr. Quinns.
Joe Quinn, Attorney, Eric Quinn, Attorney.
And we're pleased to have you on board with us today, thank you very much for, you know, to attend. We've got some kind of exciting stuff to go over today, and we'll kind of jump into that, but why don't we, Harry, if you have the desire to, or any questions regarding the consent agenda? I have no, nothing to discuss in regards to the consent agenda. Chris, do you have anything for the, for the order on the consent agenda?
Good.
Okay, so. I'm gonna try and get my volume up here. There we go. So, Harry, you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, now second that motion, discussion with none, motion carries, and we'll just go ahead and move on to business. Chris, anything for the good of the order?
Nope.
All right, let's go right down into, is we jumping right into old business then, Chris?
Yes.
All right, and so on our old business, we'd been talking about, just trying to figure out the values of our facility, the, what those offices would normally go for if they were rented out. And the real, I believe our, our main reason behind that is, obviously, we've been working with District Twenty One's Board. Matter of fact, we had a fairly good meeting here recently with them, and, or with their Board Chair. But we're, we're just looking at kind of cleaning up some areas of of the existing ILA as we also look at going to a a, I guess, a renewed ILA, and we'll probably talk about that here in a little bit. But one of the areas was making sure that, you know, we're not gifting of public funds, that we're making, doing business the way we should be doing business. And so, Chris, did you have any, you want to talk a little bit about the office?
Yeah, we hired Troy Molyad to give us an appraisal letter for the administrative building and Building D, the modular office space, and he concluded that the office administrative building lease rate value would be eight thousand four hundred eighty dollars. And Building D, the modular office space, would have lease value of two thousand sixteen dollars per month. He also made a note that for executive office rent, if District Four occupies one office, that would be a lease value between four and five, four and six hundred dollars per month.
Very good. Commissioner Andrews, did you have any questions surrounding that?
No, I, I read, read his report, and I have no question.
All right, and I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Harry?
No.
All right, so again, as we look at, you know, I think there's no, no secret now, we, matter of fact, we're gonna discuss it here in just a minute, but as we move forward into the future, it's, it's both boards, I know, have the desire to move forward with an RFA, and as we do that, that's gonna require us to make changes to the existing ILA, and I would say not make changes, but, so nobody gets excited about it, to, we will, we'll have to do away with one ILA and form a new one, a shorter version, and, and so our goal is, we don't want anybody to be excited thinking we're going to terminate a contract or an agreement. But that's part of how you move forward. I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of turn to Joe or Eric maybe for a moment to kind of explain that a little bit. Is that acceptable?
Well, I can do that, and Eric can supplement whatever I say. When we reviewed the existing ILA, we saw a need to almost start over. You want to continue the relationship, but we felt that District Four, from your standpoint, that a new ILA was called for, even if you do proceed with the formation of an RFA through a planning committee and a process, because that takes a long time. It's been done in a matter of months a few times, but usually it takes a while. Usually it's, it's not something that can be accomplished overnight, so we felt there should be some sort of placeholder agreement, if you will. Call it a new ILA, or call it whatever you want, it's essentially a bridge between now and the future, which is, hopefully, if you can reach agreement, and I don't see any reason why you couldn't, on a new entity that the voters would approve, called a regional fire authority. And so I look upon the, the draft new ILA that Dave referred to as sort of a transitional document, not a permanent document, but something much better than the existing ILA, which has some inherent problems. We've advised the Board of those problems, and we didn't want you necessarily to elaborate on that and start a big war with District Twenty One, because it's not worthwhile to do that if it's only a short-term problem. So while we have picked apart the existing ILA and criticized it in many ways, it, it has basically worked to keep you as good neighbors. We just think it needs to be replaced, but it might only be ineffective, the new one, I mean, might only be in effect for a year or so, give or take, I can't predict how long it'll take you to form an ILA, but, or to form an RFA, but I'm, I'm thinking that you would want that on the ballot, if both planning committees can recommend, or both agencies, planning committee members, can recommend to the two governing boards that an RFA be formed, you'd be moving forward by early next year with that process. So viewing it that way, it's not that big a deal, I think, as Dave said, to try to negotiate this new ILA, because it's only a placeholder, really.
Well, and to supplement what Joe was saying, too, it's important to have an ILA in place as a stopgap, because not only will you have the planning process ongoing, but you're also going to have an election. And what if the election fails? That's a contingency, and you then, an election, to form an RFA fails in the first instance.
Very good, and I appreciate both of you, the input there. And failure is not a word we want to use, but I know we have to face, right? We have to always look at the worst-case option. And I think it's really important, is the District Four and the District Twenty One Boards have been working together for, you know, eight, maybe it's even closer to ten years now, and a lot of the, the the roadblocks or the hurdles that can come into place when you're forming an RFAs, especially if you're bringing in two separate bargaining units in together, which we're not, it's, it's so nice for us, because our agreements are already, are in place with District Twenty One already, and they seem to be, from everything I hear about them, they're working agreements, and so those are, that takes a big hurdle out of the way, and a lot of, lot of the work. So we do agree with you that the sooner we can go, I know kind of our goal has been August of two thousand twenty-one. Chief, you want to add in a little bit, just maybe put your two cents in?
Excuse me, sure, yeah, I, as, just to expand on what Commissioner Hanson was saying, I think that I understand that, you know, you know, planning for an RFA, the planning committees and all the issues, you know, there's really the, as I understand it, there's four, four big things, right? There's, there's labor, which is usually the biggest one, operational considerations, financial considerations, and governance. And we, we pretty much have, well, we have ops and, and labor licked, since we're already, you know, Twenty One is providing the labor to District Four, and Twenty One runs the operation. You know, we've got a little bit of work to do in financing, and then governance will be really the, the thing, I think, that commissioners are gonna want, from both boards are gonna want to focus on, so that the, the people are best represented, and that, you know, we have a harmonious and well-represented board going forward with the new RFA.
Very good, thank you. So on that note, since we're I want to jump that back, as we started to talk about administratively, some of the areas, we know that District Four's finances are falling a little, gonna fall a little short on our contractual, on the past contractual agreements, and those were some areas we had some questions about anyway. So truly, when, when we put something in there such as a if in the new agreement, there was an agreement based for a lease payment from District Twenty One to house the Station Twelve, that's really, no money really physically changes hands, per se, if I understand that correctly, it would just, it would offset possibly part of our shortfall, getting us to our, to where we need to be on a, on payment agreement for the contract for services. So I, I know, maybe, maybe made that a little confusing, so if anybody wants to step in and clean me up a little bit, there, that's fine. Any, any questions regarding kind of what our intention is there?
Has anybody contacted Twenty One and given this idea to them?
I spoke with Commissioner Ansel, we had a meeting a couple of weeks back now, I believe, and and I, I don't know how warm and receptive it was, because we were really trying to figure out the, the biggest thing, and I think Commissioner Andrews, as you and I have discussed, and Chief VanderVeen, is that our, our intention is to take away, alleviate this concern of the, the rank and file, the, the frontline folks, and administrative, take away this fear that, you know, District Four is going to run out of money, not be able to pay for our contract for services. And so the goal is, is how do we do that? Where can we save money, or actually, you know, trade, trade-for-services type of deal, or trade for the building lease? So I, I don't know exactly what their feeling is on it. We're not ready to really move on that, is it yet, but I think that's something we would use when we start to renegotiate the ILA.
So are they willing to sit down and renegotiate?
I believe they are, I believe they are. They, they realize their intentions are the same as ours. First, I, I feel very comfortable that each of their, from what I understand, their board is in favor of, of moving forward with an RFA, we're gonna talk about that a little bit, they've got a letter that, that we're gonna discuss here in a bit, but they're, they've put a letter together, is that letter, is that acceptable to discuss that yet, Jason?
Uh. We, sure.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Yeah, if it's germane to the conversation, I think so.
Okay, yeah, so, so we, we, we will be officially receiving a letter from their board, I think they're gonna address it tomorrow in their meeting, and we will, if we pass a motion today, which I'd like to see us pass a motion today in regards to a notice of interest in the regional fire authority, so we would be sending their, their board a letter today, and as long as there, if I have a motion from Harry to do that, and I was was that a so moved?
So moved.
And I would go ahead and second that, is there any discussion on that from anybody? And that was written for us by the Quinns, and we appreciate that, so that would be motion to approve, if, if, if motion passes, to submit to the North Waltham, or I'm sorry, District Twenty One Board, a notice of interest in a regional fire authority, so. And that is to move forward with it, and as well to start the process of a planning committee. On that note, I don't think I have anything else on that, however, as part of that, we would also submit a, I'd like Harry to pass a motion to submit a notice of in regarding the, the current ILA, and that we'd like to move forward with, starting to renegotiate a new ILA, and to do that, you have to remove one and start the process of a new one, so I would like that letter to go simultaneously to the District Twenty One Board. And I believe you have an opportunity to review it, Commissioner Andrews.
Yes, that's correct.
And would you want to make a motion to approve that, then, just to submit that letter as well?
I so moved.
And I will second that, any discussion on that? All right, with that done, those were a couple of the main things that we wanted to get done today. Administrator Parks, would you like to discuss the facility use by BFD?
We still have the interlocal joint purchasing agreements, they were the first item on new business.
All right, let's go ahead and deal with that, but if you talk, talk to us there.
The same agreements we had last month regarding the small works roster, District Eighteen and Five were joining us. And we prepared the agreements, and you guys just have to approve them and sign them today, and yeah, get that done.
Is there anything, what, do we need to do something by a motion?
Yep, just a motion.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion regarding the interlocal joint purchasing agreement, which would add Waltham County Fire District Eighteen and Five to that agreement?
Uh huh, yep.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion carries, any discussion further? All right, and so, and then, so that carries. What was the other one we needed to talk about there, Chris?
Well, the next item would be the review of the facility used by Bellingham Fire Department from the two thousand twelve agreement.
Right, and I know you've spoken with the chief in regards to that, I believe, and I believe that you've spoken with Mr. Quinn.
Yes, I did.
In regards to that, and what do you want to share with us there?
Me?
To catch you off guard?
Who are you, who, who would you like to get an update from?
Oh, you, Chris, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, talk to Joe about the agreement, and I think if he could also elaborate on it, he suggested not to terminate it, but to make a change or an amendment to the agreement regarding the facility use by Bellingham Fire Department. And the agreement is still valid at, at the moment.
We're losing the sound on Chris, I.
Yeah.
For that, her voice dropped, I couldn't hear all of what she said.
Yeah, Chris, you need to maybe get closer to your mic there or something.
Oh, okay, can you hear me better?
Not really, your volume went way down.
I don't know, I didn't. I don't know?
A little.
Oh, okay, I go ahead and turn it all the way up while I'm speaking.
There you go.
Oh, goodness, that was loud.
Yeah, but we liked it.
Yeah, I, I sent the agreement over to Joe for review.
Yeah, we're losing you again, Chris.
I'm sorry?
We are losing you again, it needs to stay loud, please.
Better?
Not really.
I don't know how to change it.
Can you move it back loud, where you jumped and said that was loud?
Yeah, I can hear you loud, but, you know, I am. I have it at that, it's really loud.
All right, hey, Joe, why don't you go ahead, can you talk a little bit about that? The resolution on the fire grounds use?
I just raised the volume, so if I blast you out, it's because my speakers are turned up all the way at this point.
You're good.
Sorry. Well, I think our advice generally is that when there's a fire ground there that's owned by one party, really, District Four should be consulted and involved whenever there's use, and what happened here, I think, is that it ended up that there was a lot of free use of your training facility, and I, I don't know that that was ever your intent in, in the first place.
Some of it, I know, was trade-for-services, and it was part of a agreement. Chief, are you, are you versed on that very well, or?
I, I know the history, I've heard from other people, I know what I read, you know, the, the big thing for me is the signature page.
Right.
Which you and I have talked about before, so I'm not sure that it was quite understood, or I'm not sure it was quite understood what they were signing away when they signed that agreement.
Yeah.
Here's the problem legally that comes up with these types of shared usage of facility. We've been involved with training consortiums before in other counties, and occasionally, the state auditor will say that there appears to be a violation of RCW forty-three oh nine two-ten, which is essentially like, it's kind of like Article Eight, Section Seven of the Constitution, which prohibits you from giving gifts, okay? But one district, here's the context of forty-three oh nine two-ten, that is, you can't give a gift to another district, so you really can't take taxpayer money raised in District Four from your taxpayers and buy a training facility, or build a, a training facility, and then just let somebody in Eastern Washington come over and use it for free. It's the concept that the taxes paid in one district should be used in that district. But we don't know the full facts, maybe there was something given in return to District Four, much like the relationship with District Twenty One.
Right.
Letting them use it, well, that's one thing, because District Twenty One is your sort of lead agency in the first place in your relationship, and certainly, if they're running the operation, they need to be able to use the training facility that you happen to own, but when others start sort of piggybacking on that, the state auditor might say, well, wait a minute, what does District Four get from District Sixteen, or the South Waltham Fire Authority, or whoever? If they use your training facility, and that's the issue that I was trying to raise with Chris when I commented on that particular issue. I don't think it's that big a deal, but I'd hate to see it in an audit right now. And, and the auditors say, well, why are they giving away the use of that facility that's for their taxpayers, why are they letting anybody use it for nothing? Well, apparently, apparently there was an ILA, but it wasn't the intent of District Four, that District Twenty One, or anybody else, let all parties, all comers, use that facility for nothing, that was never your intent, so if that's the way it's been used, then something fell a little bit awry along the way.
All right, well, and, and that is, you, you know, I know there were agreements made, and those were prior to me, and the one thing that we have put into our, to our notice regarding the current ILA is, from receipt of that, we're we're asking that there are no further commitments, financial commitments, that are not, have not already been discussed and agreed upon that would commit us to anything as well. We do not want any agreement signed on that training ground to have anything to do with that training ground until we go into forming the RFA, and that will be written into the RFA plan, is that, am I correct on that, Joe?
Yeah, I think that was the thrust, of, of something that Chris asked me about, and I said, well, just put that into your letter, in, into your notice, so that they know from this day forward, you'd rather not have more commitments made on your behalf without being consulted.
Right, and once we get into the RFA planning process, then we can write that all right into the plan, and how it would all work together. Regardless, and as, as much as I don't want to say that word of, you know, if not passing, you know, if it didn't, we do not want to have any types of bound commitments that are, that are solid on that training ground, because that's gonna be our, you know, one of our main tools that we have to utilize when we're moving forward, so. So I'm good with all of that. Do we need to do anything on that? Are we just strictly talking, reviewing that right now, we're, we're not gonna make any decisions or motions or movements on that training ground, RFA right now, or ILA right now?
You know, it looks like to me that I reread that agreement with the Bellingham Fire Department.
Yeah.
It almost looks like it was based on the fact that they're gonna give us mutual aid, and consequently, they can use our training ground for free, and that can't be.
Yeah. So, so we, I think that's our next move, is we need to review that, we need to get the chief's input, and some direction from him, as well as, again, with the Quinns, our legal counsel there, and so that will be our, kind of our next step moving forward, and I'm just not really prepared to make any recommendations at this time, I'd like to understand it a little better, maybe get all the players together and discuss it. But, Jason, does that sound acceptable to you?
Yeah, I, I, Chief Hewitt and I from BFD have, have talked already, he knows this is an issue, he knows it's coming up, we've, he and I have talked about it multiple times, Chris and I have been talking about, you know, the rental, facility rental fees, and do we need to readjust those? That would, I think that would be something that we would want to roll out at the same time.
Sure.
Go to Bellingham and say, well, you know, because we can go to them and say we got an issue with the cost, but we don't have what we, what we want to change the cost to, and we're gonna look kind of silly, so we need to get that hammered out, and then I just wanted to just to say as well, Commissioner Hanson, and, and actually, both commissioners and Chris, hopefully, I've made myself pretty clear about how I feel about this agreement since I first read it.
Sure.
You know, I, I, I hope you understand that I fall on the side of, this is not right, it was not signed by any District Four commissioner. And as, as chief, as chief, I would not, that is your asset, and I, I would not enter into any agreement with, as, as District Twenty One for your asset, so.
Right.
I understand having it in the ILA, I, I totally agree with it being memorialized, but I did just want to say that, that I, of course, I would not do anything with any of your assets.
Absolutely.
Out you being one hundred percent involved.
And, and you've shared that prior to this as well, and I, I appreciate you, again, reiterating it. On, on that note, I know that we're gonna pretty much leave that to, you and Chris are looking at the, the suggested increase in the rates, and then hopefully, maybe for the next meeting, you guys will have something for us on that, and we'll be ready to move forward. And Chris will obviously be in touch with Joe and Eric on that as well, so if you're fine with that, Commissioner Andrews, I'm good with that.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan, but you know, we have to realize that with Bellingham annexing most of our tax base, we have got to come up with ways to increase income.
Right.
That is a very, very beneficial thing, is that fire district training ground, and we can't just give that away to Bellingham for free.
No.
They're, they're gonna pay, they're paying us a mitigation fee, but that's only gonna go for three years. And then disappear, so that we have to really consider.
And, and, and I don't, I, I don't question you at all on that, Commissioner Andrews, I agree. I do, I have been looking at the run logs, and, and I realized that every time we have a fire call here within District Four, we usually receive anywhere from one to four additional engines that come from the city of Bellingham, or maybe it's one to three, but whatever it is, they do respond to almost every single call we have, what, it was an EMS call. they do respond to almost every single call we have. What, it was an EMS call, we see Bellingham Fire, and it's often even a staff officer with them. Uh, but on, or on gate calls, it's always at least a medic unit or an aid unit, uh, supporting us, just as we do for them. And that's a, that is a great, uh, trade-for-services agreement. And so, uh, we sure want to work with them as close as we can, but, uh, Commissioner Andrews is correct. Uh, hopefully, all this is alleviated by passing an RFA, but right now, we have to assume, uh, we have to look at our, uh, physical, uh, financial responsibilities right now, so. Uh, that's why I think, I, I do agree, if we could be ready to discuss those rates and, um, make a motion on that by the next meeting, I think that would be a really good idea.
Okay.
All right. Um, Chris, would you like to discuss the ground maintenance? For Station Twelve?
Yep, I got, uh, two quotes from two landscaping companies. And, um, I met with Jason, and we looked at the one that was the better rate. And, uh, they, the landscaping company started this week spraying, and, uh, on Friday, they start outside to spruce up the administrative area.
Very good. So if anybody couldn't hear her clearly on that, we went out, wore a couple of bids on that. I think we went with JB Landscaping, uh,
With Winwood.
Uh, no, we, uh, okay, but we, we accepted two bids, I guess is what I meant to say. One was from JB, uh, Lawn Services or Landscaping, and then Winwood, who, Winwood's done stuff for the district before, and they did come in with the, uh, the better bid. And so that's who we're going to go with. Do we need to, that was already approved, isn't it? Do we, do we need to do anything on that? Okay, I see the chief, Chris will shake in their heads, no. All right, on that note, um, I think what we are going to do, is there anything else in that, any of that business we needed to discuss? Okay, um, we also, as I promised, uh, uh, administrative manager, uh, Ms. Parks, uh, we would do a, uh, after her first three months in her position, we would do a, uh, a, a review and evaluation, I guess we might, might just call it, and, uh, so on that note, we're going to go ahead and go into a, an executive session, that Commissioner Andrews and myself, and, uh, if the Quins, uh, if, if our legal counsel would like to join us in on that, maybe just for some, this is our first time to do this, uh, that would, we'd appreciate that. And then we'll probably just be into that. I don't think we need to take a long time. It's, uh, twelve forty-two. Why don't we, uh, come out of that at about one o'clock? Is that acceptable to you? Do you guys have that time?
Did you say that the, um,
We go into it.
You have to announce the purpose according to the statute of the
Yeah.
Act. So I, what I think I heard you say is that you want to go into executive session starting at twelve forty-two or twelve forty-five.
Yes.
Up for how long?
And for about fifteen minutes.
And, and the purpose has to be stated as well. I, I think you said essentially it's to review the performance of a public employee under the statute, right?
That's exactly what's written right here in front of me. Thank you.
You have to do, for the minutes, and that's all you have to put in the minutes with respect to an executive session. I like
Yeah.
So I think
I will just read it, just to make the, so we would like to go into executive session per RCW forty-two point three zero, point one one zero G, N S G, to evaluate the qualifications or, of an applicant for public employment, or the review of a performance of a public employee. We will just be doing their, uh, uh, performance review, uh, for District Administrator.
Right, that's under one-ten, one-G.
One-ten, one-G. Oh, okay, thank you very much. So if we can do that, uh, Chief, could you take us out and then bring us back in at, uh, we would enter back in at about one o'clock?
Yes, give me one second here. Uh, you know what? I'm going to step out of my office. Uh, I'm, let me stop the live stream.